All right, I see Dan is here. All right, let's see, one, two, three. All five of us are here, so let's get started at 7:00 PM. We will start the Dartmouth Planning Board meeting of March 24th, 2025 with a roll call vote, reminding the public and everybody that this meeting is being recorded. Margaret Sweet.
Yeah.
Kevin Estes.
Here.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Here.
Helio Rosa.
Here.
And Kevin Mello here. Very good. On to agenda item number one under administrative items. Approval not required for 20 Fisher Road. Dan, you wanna?
Sure. As Mr. Mello said, this is an application for an approval not required plan. 20 Fisher Road also designated as Assessors Map 44 Lot 21. This is a parcel where they're trying to take a little piece off for an encroachment issue on the lot next door. So this plan would be eligible for endorsement under the Dartmouth Subdivision Regulations 1.103. I believe there's an app, the applicant's representative is here. I don't know if you want to have them speak on it or if you would like me to further elaborate.
Well, why don't we see if there's any questions from the board? It's pretty self-explanatory. Does the board have any questions?
No, Chair, Mr. Chairman, no, I don't.
No, for me.
Okay. Then I guess I would ask the board for a motion.
Motion made.
Motion made by Nick Cyclepatis. Kevin was out a second.
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes. All in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Number two, site plan review for 581 Farns Corner Road. Stan?
This is a continuation from a discussion at the previous meeting. This is a site plan review under PSPR 24-14. 581 Farns Corner Road also designated as Assessors Map 6828. This is for the expansion of the existing facility, which is South Coast Behavioral Health Center. At the last meeting, staff had a few comments and questions of the applicant, as well as the board had a few questions and things that they would like to see added to the plan. We received revised plans from the applicant. They seem to have addressed all the issues. They added a few trees to the eastern side of the property as requested. They added one-way signage at the entrance coming into the new area. They were able to get the questions addressed by the fire chief, as well as, like I said, the staff questions. One of the other concerns was how close the building was to the access road. They have pulled that building further away from the access road, so that changed one of their waiver requests in compliance with what we discussed at the last meeting. And we also have sign off from, like I said, the Fire Department. DPW also signed off on all their comments. And the Building Department gave written comment to the applicant addressing the setback concerns. I believe the applicant is here on this one as well. So I don't feel like to have him speak on behalf of the specifics if the board has any questions of him.
Okay. The board, any questions from the board?
I'd like to share something, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Can we have them, just because of the amount of time and how visible it was, the proximity of the building to the asphalt, can they show us, at least in this meeting, the change made versus accepting the verbal statement?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Patrick Carroll. Give me one. I'm not sure if I can share my screen or not, or if you've got the plan set there, and I'd be happy to point it out.
DCTV can help you share. There you go. You should be able to share now.
Okay, give me one second here. I'm waiting for my computer to load. I was.
I have the plans now, Pat. Do you want me to screen share?
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, just send the request now. Beautiful. Okay. Let me, so here is sheet 5.0 in case anybody wants to follow along, but go ahead, Patrick. Let me know when you guys can see my screen.
Yes. Yes, there we go.
Okay.
Um, yeah, like Pablo was mentioning right there, we even have a blow up. It may have a... Can y'all still see his screen? I may not be able to see it anymore.
Oh, did it? Can you guys see it now?
Yes. There we go.
Okay, yes. So we have a blow up up here of the ballers on the edge of the building. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, so like Dan mentioned, we've got, I think, a total of about seven feet there from the back of the curb, and I think, yeah, 8.3 from the face of the curb. So there's quite a bit more room. The overhang also has been pulled back, so there's... The closest portion of the building is that corner of the building and no longer the overhang itself.
Great. So the overhang just, sorry, go ahead. Well, I mean, I was just gonna say that the overhang now pulls back to just over here, and like I just said, the closest the building is only 8.3 feet, and then we have these four ballers put in half off the back of the curb. And then these four dimensions show how far each baller specifically is to the closest point at the building. And again, it's on sheet 5.0.
Great, appreciate that, guys.
Yes, sir. Is there anything else? Anybody else would like to see?
Anything else from, any other questions or?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Helio.
Just want to put it publicly stated, just an appreciation to Patrick and the entire team for working with the board on making these improvements. I do fully believe that they are improvements to what was presented. I did also notice that there is a "do not enter" sign by the four spaces in the front, preventing folks from going out on that one-way drive. Again, full appreciation. I'll endorse this plan.
Yes, I thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing?
Yes, Stan.
If the board so chooses to approve this plan, just to make a note to the applicant and for the condition, we still need to receive the two full-size hard copy plans, as well as a CAD file and one copy of the final stormwater report.
Yes, I can confirm that all physical copies are in the mail, and I was gonna ask you, Dan, maybe we can talk after the meeting, how you would like me to send you the CAD files?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So could I have a motion, please?
Motion made to approve as presented with the changes made hereby tonight. Site plan review for 581 Farns Corner Road.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Helio Rosa. All in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes. Very good. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all. Good night. Thank you.
Nice.
Okay, number three, OSRD subdivision plan, Goland Farms, 482 Fisher Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recuse myself from the discussion on this item. Ross can handle any questions and discuss this item.
Okay. Ross, are you here there?
Yes. Hi, everybody.
How are you?
Good, good. How are we all doing?
Good. Hi, Ross.
Hi. So just a refresher, we reviewed and the planning board approved this back in October for the plans. They have wrapped up getting the denials from the Conservation Commission Select Board and nonprofits for the option to hold the conservation restriction on the open space parcel, as this is an OSRD. We also recently received the Open Space Covenant, Performance Covenant, and HOA drafts. Those are still unfortunately being reviewed at this time by town council, just to make sure that it crosses all the Ts and dots, all the Is. I had it on the agenda just in case, but this is probably going to have to wait until a future meeting. Obviously, it's up to the board. But that's where this stands at this current moment.
Okay, so as far as it goes tonight, we are not prepared to vote for this?
It seems like in the past, it's been common practice to have these documents reviewed by town council, so that's what I did, and I received them. I also have made town council aware of a potential, it was in your packets, there's a Board of Health meeting on Wednesday to review a restrictive covenant for nitrogen loading on the open space parcel. So there could be some confliction if that was to get approved tonight, and then on Wednesday, and both documents get recorded and they say different things. So that's gonna be on Wednesday, so pending the vote on this tonight, it could impact, it could, you know, result in a conflict between the recorded documents.
Okay, all right. So we should just continue that at a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Really nothing to vote on then, correct? You don't need the continuation?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, it's not, it's not a, you know, you guys would just be voting to endorse and then come in and sign those papers to be recorded.
So we'll just have it out a future meeting then?
Okay.
All right.
You need a motion to continue, Mr. Chair?
Well, that's what I was asking Ross, but it's not an official. He was just giving us an update of it.
Okay.
Essentially, there's nothing on the agenda to vote on. It was just an update from them. So I don't feel we need to vote on anything. So next, number four is minutes of March 10th, 2025.
Take our time, guys. We're gonna slow this down on Kevin a little bit.
Hey, 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 I'm trying to beat, I'm trying to beat Kevin's record here. Let's go.
Minutes available for us to scroll through here as a group?
Yeah.
Kevin, I disagree with.
Motion to approve and accept the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Estes and second by Margaret Sweet. All in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes. Correspondence, pre-town in Westport. Any questions or discussion?
Lots of denials.
So I need a motion to acknowledge. By Kevin Estes, second, by Helio Rosa, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Old business, new business, incoming CVA applications. Anything interesting, Dan or Ross?
Nothing new on new zoning board applications, decisions, nothing filed yet. They did have a meeting on one item we had discussed before, but it hasn't been the filed decision yet.
Okay. Then we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Anything? Anyone have any subcommittee meetings recently?
No. Sherford meets on Wednesday.
Okay. Planners Report.
A few items that we kind of touched on last time, just to give updates in regards to the remote meetings. Continuing, last Thursday, both the House and Senate passed legislation to extend the current situation regarding hybrid meetings. It is currently sitting on the governor's desk, hopefully for endorsement. So I am hoping to have a finalized decision before we have to make the call on the next meeting, whether we'll be in person or be able to maintain the current status quo for doing remote meetings. We checked before we left today, Ross and I, and nothing, nothing, nothing posted yet as of end of day, so we'll keep an eye on and let the board know as soon as we hear something.
Dan, is there a date when you would have to have that decision made before making the decision for our next meeting?
We usually post on the Wednesday before. If anything came in for an application, we'd have to notify the newspaper, so we'd have to, in that notification, say whether it's a traditional open meeting or if it's hybrid. So as of right now, we have nothing. And see, they seem to indicate that it should come fairly quickly. I know the governor was at the opening of the new Bedford train station today, so I think she had other other things going on today, but hopefully we'll get an answer before we have to make that call. If not, we have to go under the assumption that would be a typical open meeting, so, but it seems like all signs are pointing to keeping the hybrid option available.
Well, I told, I called Dan and told Dan, I fractured my ankle. It's my right, so I can't attend any meetings, so no matter what, I'm hoping that I could do a hybrid anyway, so I won't miss a lot of meetings.
Sorry to hear that, Margaret.
Well, thank you. You're not as sorry as I am. Let me tell you, not being able to drive is not fun.
Margaret, it's not, good news, it's not unprecedented to have one member join remotely if the rest of us had to meet in person.
Yeah.
The room is all set up for that, too.
Is it?
The technology's in place. Yep, yep. From what I understand, so.
I know the Select Board had to do something similar, not that long ago.
That's right. That's right. They did.
Correct. Okay, anything else, Stan?
Yep, one before that, the Housing Production Plan Committee, we discussed briefly. I had some follow-up questions to Chris Vitality from the Selectman's Office that's coordinating this. He responded with a few other questions that the board members had. We forwarded that email. You say, the first item we talked about, if we could delay until after the elections. He said ideally, they like to have something by the end of the month, but it probably would be all right if the planning board wanted to wait, so he outlines during, the meetings would probably be during normal business hours and be in some version of in-person or hybrid, so that gives people a chance to think about if they'd be available and interested in doing that. And if the board so chooses to continue from the previous discussion to wait until after the April 1st election to to assign somebody to this committee.
Got a little feedback there. I just wanted to go on, on the record, is saying that I don't, I don't think I can pick up another daytime meeting. I'm already on the water meeting for the water group, and that looks to be to exist as a daytime meeting. And daytime meetings are hard for me.
I thought Helio wanted to do that. Don't, did you want to do that, Helio?
Yes, I still remain open to do it. The only caveat is, I just need probably at least a week's notice when the meetings would be. You know, if I'm only get two days' notice, that's probably gonna be difficult, but I have some flexibility on schedule to make it happen. So, yes, I am still willing to do it.
Perfect. Hey.
Going back again into the ADU updates, Ross gave an outline of the previous meeting that was sent to all the board members. After he compiled that, there was a webinar on March 11th that both Ross and I took part in, and you can see at the bottom of that page in red, they already have some conflicting definitions and interpretations, so kind of goes back to our previous discussion that this is kind of a wait-and-see, work-in-progress kind of approach, but as we said last time, we will keep an eye on all correspondence and keep the board as up to date as we can going forward. Talked to the building inspector today. As of today, we still don't have any applications, a lot of interest, a lot of questions, a lot of inquiries, but nothing that has been actually applied for as of today. One other item, there is a 40B project that is being proposed at 498 Old Westport Road. This tentatively is called Sherbrook Farms. Again, received a request from Chris Vitaly to see if any board members, they are going to have a site walk for preliminary discussion with mass housing. That is, as of today, is scheduled for Tuesday, April 1st, which is Election Day at 11:00. He wanted me to put out to the board members to see if anybody would be interested in doing that site walk and he could add to the list. This is just kind of a gathering of information, comments, concern period, before they actually file the comprehensive permit. The comprehensive permit for 40B goes through the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it's not something we will see before the planning board. Any comments that, if we do decide that you would like to address any concerns from the board, would need to be done by Wednesday, April 16th? So if anybody's got any questions, they can follow up with me in the office as well, but this site walk is just kind of a chance for the town to walk the site, address any concerns that we might want to put into a crest for comments to the mass housing.
How many units?
That was my question.
I don't know what they have proposed right now. We haven't gotten copies yet. I think they're putting something like on a, like on a OneDrive or something to that effect, that we'd be able to look at the plans. Ross, do you remember, I know they came before Technical Review, before I was, before I was involved with the Planning Department. Do you know by any chance what the number of units were?
I don't recall, but I can certainly check my notes I took whenever that meeting was, and if I find anything, I'll email it out.
Thank you.
It was, yeah, Ross. It was three separate buildings, correct? They were kind of, kind of form an H shape. And I think each building was three stories tall, and for some reason, 85 is in my head.
For a building?
For the site in total.
Oh, in total?
In total. It would be the photos reminded me a lot of the new building behind the Nissan dealership in the Target parking lot. So one would go from side to side in the center, and then there'd be two running north to south on either flank in it, so kind of like a letter H, if you would. It has been a while. It's been about six months since we had that meeting. I'm trying to see if I can get into it, but Ross, that would still be under the Technical Reviewers section of our.
I would think. Yeah, I haven't taken anything out of that.
We can see if they have like a cover sheet report that might, I outlined some of these in a real basic format, and we can email that out to the board to give you, to give you kind of a overview of what we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm not going, scanning quickly. I'm not catching Old Westport. Oh. Bowman, was it Bowman, 498? Old Westport Road?
Yes.
It's 498. Right now, it's listed as Sherbrook Farms LLCs, but I'm not sure what it, it could have been something different when they came in for the Technical Reviewers.
So my question is, aren't we already at 10%? Can they?
No, I don't think so.
Dartmouth Woods 2 does not bring us to 10%?
No, because they need, they need the actual permits before they can count them.
That would, Kevin, when I was running, that project would have brought us to 10%, because that was one of the items that was partially debated between myself and somebody else in terms of demand and supply and so on. So Dan, you're implying that unless they have the permit, it's not, it doesn't account for?
I believe that the number that they're using right now, I believe, is 8.7% that town's at.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's occupancy permit, what level that permit kicks in that accounts, but I know from the discussion with the Selectman's Office that those do not count yet towards our total.
I would assume there's gonna be some occupancy permits or percentage of pro-rata of the project before it's accounted for. I mean, otherwise, what is it? It's just an idea.
Right.
Well, I mean, they have the permits in the ground, you know, they're building, so it's gotta be, you know, 50% or is it 75%? What, at what point?
Yeah, those numbers all go through the Selectman's Office, so I can, I can ask him at what point that kicks in. I believe it was occupancy permit, but I can double check.
Well, that would make a lot of sense, occupancy permit, because you can start a building, you can get something done, we've all seen it, and then it's not completed.
Right.
It would make more sense to be occupied.
Exactly.
All right, so I do have the plans. It is actually four buildings, so the right-hand side of the letter H would have a double a double, so it's a single north to south, a single east to west, and then two north to south buildings. Typical building, you know, residential building. I'm not reading how many. 198. And they're all built right on the street. They're not built, they're not set back because of the topography in the land, so that's all I have, but Ross can get them to you because they were. Okay, anything else, Dan?
One last thing, I would just like to thank the current chairman. I know this is his last meeting. I haven't been around the town for too long, but all my questions that I've asked of him, he's been extremely helpful. Sorry to see him leaving the board, but I just want to take this time to give my appreciation for his help in the couple of months that I've been here, so thanks, thanks for the service to the town and good luck with future endeavors.
You're welcome, and thank you right back.
Gee, I forgot it is your last meeting, Kevin.
We're not ending this anytime soon, Margaret. No, 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 keep it going.
Why do you think I'm so smiling? Come on, Margaret.
I was fully aware that this is your last meeting, and I was, I'm prepared to drag it out for an extra minute or two.
Okay, all right. You just want to keep your record intact.
No, no, no.
I want to say something really quick. Kevin and I have been childhood friends, most of you know that, but I want to applaud Kevin from the bottom of my heart, because from his earliest years in town government, he made it clear to me that he was doing it for the right reasons and from his heart. And I truly think that Kevin is a role model in that regard, obviously was for me and should be for many. And all I can say, Kev, is thank you, and just, you had a positive impact on me and what it meant to serve the town in any capacity that you can or anyone else can. And you did it right. You did it with your head high, and you did it with integrity and honesty, and that's probably why we're good friends, so congrats and thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think, Kevin, you've done it for the right reasons, and I think that's great. I really do. It wasn't, you didn't have any agendas. You always did for the right reasons.
Thank you.
Even when you were on zoning.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, in my, first of all, I think we've kept Kevin's record intact as of right now. It's 7:29, so I think you're okay, Kevin.
All right, yeah, it's okay.
Secondly, in my short time here on the board, I just want to also offer my gratitude for your leadership, for your guidance, for a new guy that's come into this board. And it didn't take very long to echo what Margaret and Nick have said, your integrity, your honesty, and your approach to this board and the town. Your your integrity, your honesty, and your approach to this board and the town overall is is commended and to be replicated. So thank you.
Thank you.
And as you're
Very much.
As your vice chair, Kevin, uh, I I do appreciate uh and and respect everything that you've done here. And um uh particularly my my first uh my first year, that was a particularly challenging uh uh a year to uh to be the the chairperson. And and I I give you a lot of credit in in working through that particular year. Uh, and but more importantly, uh, just what you've done for the town and and the planning board and what uh I hope uh that you find some way to continue uh your your positive aspect and influence in uh in our town because we would be the better for it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
One more question.
Yes.
I'm being serious. What what's on your mind in short form for the master plan as you leave and we pick up? What would you like to see in the next twelve to twenty-four months? Couple of topics, couple of subjects that you hope we follow up on?
Yeah, I've really really hoping from recent events um that everyone revisits those pla- parking plans in in parking requirements, especially for for some of the auto dealerships. Um, you know, one didn't, it didn't work out, the last one. Um, we tried everything we could to help them. Uh, but I do believe that maybe the parking requirements could be reduced, and I think its focus uh is still gotta be housing, you know, fifty plus, uh fifty-five plus, sixty-five plus, whatever it is. Um, veterans housing. I know some people are saying, oh, just what we need, more houses, another Amelia on Dartmouth Street, but we only have two empties. So how can anyone even question if if a facility that's been built recently only has two vacancies? How can they say we don't need any more? You know, so obviously, keep an eye on on Amelia two and see how fast she fills up because that's a good gauge.
Sure.
It's a very good gauge. And and I think it is working because I know some people that have moved in there.
Yeah.
And they have listed their homes for sale. And now young people, young families are living in their old family homes and um filling our schools with Dartmouth kids and um, so it is necessary, no matter how many people like to say, oh, I don't think we need any more housing.
I think it's important, too, Kevin. You know, that's one of the things I want to keep putting on because it is important. And we do want to keep the people that have lived here a while, and if they want to move into an apartment building like that, sell their house. That's what it's about.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um.
And we also need an entry point for uh for for younger
Right.
younger couples that are coming in. And it's uh it that that that's thin picking right now.
It is.
Uh, everyone has to remember that not growing is not an option. Landowners have rights. And we, you know, no, no board, no government official, no matter what their personal value may be, should deny a landowner their rights.
Right.
Agreed.
That is gotta be the most important thing. I've taught my kids throughout all of this. Um, and hopefully everyone out there, you know. Uh, there are so many projects that I hated to see. And I wish I had the money to buy them. Because I would, that's the only way that I would have stopped the project is because I if I bought it myself. So, and we're gonna see more of those projects coming through. Um, but I'm proud of the way the the town has grown. It's controlled. It's regulated and um it's to a standard. And when I say architectural design standards, I don't mean it to be a pain in the butt. This town should stay looking the way it is as much as possible. That's all. So I do want to thank each and every one of you. Uh, Ross, I couldn't have made it through uh the last six months without you uh in without the rest of the board, obviously. Dan, so happy to have you on board. Um, I think you're gonna be here far longer than I ever was. So uh, good luck with that. And you guys will be, you know, if everything goes uh the way it seems to be going for the election, you're gonna be in good hands. Um, all around. You'll have, you'll, you'll, you'll have a great board to continue.
Likewise, Kevin. Thank you for all your help.
Thank you. So I guess uh as the last official, I will be asking for a motion to uh adjourn.
You don't have the right to make it this one time?
No, I don't. Sorry.
I'll make it for you, Kev.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Nick Cycle Patis, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Nick Cycle Patis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Helio Rosa.
Yes.
And Kevin Mellow, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.